Today's Monday, June the 8th, 2015, and I call the Potter County Commissioners Court to order. Today we have Mr. Jim Wallace from St. Luke's Presbyterian Church, he's going to do the invocation. If you will come up and please stand for the pledge.
Judge Scott, giver of all life, you have given us this day. We pray that we might live it to the fullest that serves you. I would pray for this body, for those who deliver right here and make decisions that impact many people, that your spirit would guide them, that your wisdom would be with them in those decisions that they make, and in all those decisions, that those they have been elected by will be the ones to be served. Lord, beyond us as we gather here, I pray for our communities, for our state and nation, for a time of flooding and tornadoes and more bad weather have changed the lives of many and have cost the lives of some, for them and their families, I would pray, and now those who are in recovery and moving forward in every attempt, that you would be with them. I pray for leaders not only of this court but of the world, those who are given the call to make decisions that affect so many people, that your wisdom and your love would be there with them. And now, Lord, I pause just a moment to allow each here gathered a moment of silent prayer as they begin this meeting.
Any questions?
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, number one is approval of minutes from May 26, 2015, Potter County Commissioners Court. Make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Give a motion and second.
I have a question. On the interstate fare motion, is that clear enough that everybody understands that we were going to fix those three facilities and we're asking the fair to take over where our chairs? And the third thing was, is that all clear enough?
See, there was a motion to request a codeine, his words were expressed on the paper, and you were seeing all the insurance. That was my motion, not considering that was.
That's clear enough there, but is that?
I was saying.
So, it was not also to include the calls to replace the structural 50-50?
It was.
That was the third part. Is that clear? Did you say that? Okay. Julie's a little bit confused though, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just couldn't find a copy of our minute.
I was a bit confused.
I like good news anyway.
It's your normal look, isn't it?
It is, that's exactly.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion and a second on, if you would raise your hand. Budget amendment to consider an act upon budget for fiscal year 2015-2015.
Carrie, is this the same budget, or I'm sorry, same agenda item as item 16?
No, I'm putting these all as a budget amendment because I always have those all.
Okay.
How many of we approve the budget amendment that's presented for fiscal year 2014-15? Second.
Okay, I have a question and second. Julie, let me know if you don't understand who they are.
Okay.
I know that look, I've seen it. All in favor, raise your hand. Number three, to consider an act upon approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county attorney's office for the year of May 20, 2015 through June 3, 2015. Check numbers 162485 through 162753, and wire transfer is number 555 through 560, in the amount of $2,22,855.19.
Move we pay the vouchers as we.
Second.
Give a motion and second. All in favor, raise your hand.
I have one question, there was an item on page nine, repair of the west parking lot cameras, what happened to that thing? That needed to be repaired?
There was a bracket on it that had broken off.
Vandalized or?
No, I think it was just wear and tear on it.
Okay, thank you.
Wear and tear on a camera?
Right. I'm the messenger.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number four, insurance reports, recognize insurance report case where anything unusual was one of the.
No ma'am, nothing unusual.
So, recognize. Number five, capital credit funds to serve by the receipt of funds under Texas property code section 74 point 0, sorry, section 74 point 602. Determine the use of these funds and set a budget accordingly. Think we have someone in the audience from Bowie Middle School, and I'll let you introduce that person if you'd like.
Thank you, Judge. So I have included in the packet for consideration, and Carrie, please keep me honest here on my numbers, I'm showing that we got allocated $5,725 for the capital credits that we can then determine how to use within our community. I did work with Carrie in terms of if this was an appropriate proposal, so there is a proposal in your packet specifically from Bowie Middle School about a sound theater arts effect system that they can use in the school. Part of the reason for my delay in including this the first time around is they applied through a grant, Rango Area Foundation, and they were waiting until the first of the year to see if they got that. They did not receive the grant dollars. So the packet that you have in front of you is currently quoted at $16,999.99. There is a correction to that. The school is only requesting $15,0299, and I have Mr. John Smith, principal of Bowie Middle School in the audience to answer questions. But specifically for these dollars, I know there are restrictions on how we can use them, and I did work with Carrie to make sure that this would meet appropriate criteria, and I'm specifically looking at section seven, speaking to the encouragement, promotion, improvement, and application of the arts of where this might fit inappropriate criteria of how we could use those dollars. Just a little bit as it relates to Bowie Middle School, some of the statistics from the Texas Education Agency roughly show Bowie well over 1,100 students at this point. I would say an average is anywhere from four to 600, our Bowie middle schools in the district. So Bowie has obviously lots of kids. Roughly 86% of those cited an economically disadvantaged and a high percent at risk, so I'm obviously supporting anything we can do to help encourage the arts and anything at that campus. And again, I do have Mr. Smith present if you have questions on the proposal, or if there's anything you'd like to add, Mr. Smith, that I didn't speak to correctly.
As Mrs. Smith is approaching the roster, how much do we have at any time?
About $57,000.
$57,000.
So if we did fund this in its entirety, it would still leave us $4,222 and a penny to use appropriately with the other requests.
Do we have a window of when these funds expire or just?
Probably so. They just have to be used for abuse cases, this is the lifetime.
And does the funds roll over, or are there any, many funds that would be added to the?
Well, it's no guarantee that you'll get funds every year, it just depends on what gets on claim by different collections, but I'm assuming we can designate anything that's left in period.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Really, we have a very big fine art, you probably didn't know that, didn't know all that, but we are orchestras, over 200 plus kids, and it's probably 150 plus maybe, depending on town, and this would benefit our theater arts, and it would also benefit those other programs because it would really upgrade our theater, our auditorium, with our ability to play music and involve other ways of media, our sound system, there's very good, it's still a cassette, a fashion, I don't know if you guys still have cassette tapes.
My question is, since this is another taxing entity that we're potentially giving funds to, how does this affect that us giving to another taxing entity? That's my first question. Second one would be, AISD got some ad press last week with $3 million in travel, and I'm surprised that they can't afford $1,500 for expenses.
I can speak to legal issue, I'm not aware of a restriction on it due to another government, so, and you say that places, as long as the legislature will pay that, that restrict that here, so I think it's only.
How many students will this affect directly?
Directly, it will affect over 100 students, 10%, of our population. There's a new sixth grade campus across the street, but that sixth grade campus will also use our auditorium for their presentations, and that will be a joint.
Eventually, it'll probably affect every student that comes in there and listens to anything, so.
Anybody that attends anything within our auditorium will receive benefit, we probably have over 500 kids involved in some type of fine arts program.
I think the presentation is very well written, and certainly, and played with a thing that answers the total, especially the student body, citizens. My question is, as we put this out, and let's say Tommy Payton, we establish this as precedence, and you know how the, not the Ooma Mill, but the Great Bag, and we give the other two schools, three schools, and that's fine, we have our funds, if we allocate similar amounts, there are all proposals out there.
It's just first come, first served.
Yeah, that's.
Go ahead, Judge.
That's what I'm thinking too, is if it is first come, first served, you know, we'll deal with that prospect when it comes to the court, but right now, these will be our priorities, and I'm certainly in favor of sponsoring this music issue.
And just to echo some of Carrie's comments earlier, I think the fact that it is dependent state to state, or year to year, at the state whether we receive any dollars, last year we didn't get any, for different reasons, but we got $0 last year, so I think that adds to the precedence of, it really is volatile and dependent. And Judge, I'm not sure on your particular approach with this agenda item, but if you're okay, I would like to make a motion for this particular one, so we know the dollars that are left, and then we can allocate and discuss accordingly.
Of course, yeah.
Okay. I would make a motion that the Commissioners Court approve to allocate $1,502.99 for the sound effect at Bowie Theater Arts, and to be used from the capital credits, I'm looking for the account correctly, Carrie, so you might have to tell me, capital credits account?
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and second. All in favor, raise your hand. Number one. Okay, also you will find in your packet, snack pack for kids, and the bridge is two other items that I'm in close to, and I would like to see some of this money go to them if there may be a problem with one of the snack pack, may be a problem, because it specifically says for abused children, and where you can specifically say that these kids were abused, in my view, in my view, they are if they can't, if there's nothing to eat at home.
I think if you consider them abused by circumstances, maybe, turn it that way.
Yeah. Anyway, I would like, I would like to see a little bit of money towards that, and also the bridge, you were specifically for abused children, that's just my thought. If y'all have anything else you'd like to add, or any other organization that you'd like to.
Snack pack is a great room to consider, so I think all of us, and that's something that's very difficult.
Do you like to just divide it accordingly?
Can we, what do we left? $4,222.1. Can we, do y'all have an opposition to dividing that up to these organizations? Is there anything else that y'all can come up with?
I have a thought, but I was just thinking out, in, his first one, first served.
So let me make a motion then, that we divide the remaining money to go between, equally between snack pack for kids and the bridge. Second.
Second.
What is the incremental amounts, the breakdown?
It's not much, but it helps. Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you so much.
Carrie, thank you for your help in getting this issue.
I think we have it in the future, I'm sure more people know about, it's another way, yes, that's, maybe taking some people by surprise.
Okay, number six, District Attorney's Office to discuss and take any action necessary regarding the District Attorney's Secretary position currently being utilized by special crimes. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Currently, before we said, the District Attorney's Office has a secretarial position that is in the special crime unit. The Admiral Police Department has two liaison positions, they paid for, they're over in my office, it's kind of a switch out. And the reason for that was, in previous that time periods, there was a lot of information that needed to go back and forth between the Admiral Police Department and our office, Commissioner Kelly, certainly people were, and that's what they were primarily responsible in doing, making sure those communications get back and forth. And this day and time now, we're using more email, and then we can get our operating system up and running, we're going to be able to even do it even more direct through that system, and so I approached Chief Taylor about the possibility of eliminating those two positions, and then also then allowing me to bring the Special Prosecution Secretary back into our office. They got that resolved last Friday on their end, and are willing to do that, and what that will do is give me a secretary back in my office, which I'm better served right now with having another investigator than I am another secretary, because of the new operating system we're going to have. Therefore, between two lawyers and the office administrator that left, I had funds, I had to replace those positions. I'll replace those positions with individuals that didn't have the experience that the other people did, so I got them for less money. So I have enough additional money left in that salary account to cover the difference between a secretary position and what an investigator would make. So I'm not going to be over budget, it's going to be within the amount, and that's what I would ask the court to do, is allow me to transfer that position from secretary position to an investigator position.
So by doing so, you could much have all of your staff in place moving forward that facilitate all of the investigations and administrative that we're looking at in the next year.
Right, I think it's much better fit for us to have another investigator than another secretary.
Then one item that I confirmed with Carrie, just for the sake of discussion, the employee count will not change, and the budgeted dollars will not change, not only this year, but also potentially what's being requested next year, which I think is key when we look at insurance and the other compounding factors outside of salary, so that was good to hear.
That is correct.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve.
Motion and second, I'll give the second. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much.
Good presentation, young man. Good presentation.
I came within one game of bringing my room.
Right, number seven, Potter County Extension Office to consider an act upon agent positions in Potter County. Brandon has the presentation. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, nice to see each of you.
Got some good news this morning.
Yes, yes, we've been through this a few times over the last few months, so you know the drill by this time, kind of what we do. Need to bring Austin Boils to you this morning for your consideration. Austin is currently the county extension agent and old county, he's served there for the past two years, done an outstanding job there and ready for a move to a bigger, more challenging county, so he's applied, and we deemed him very qualified to handle that. Just a little bit about Austin, he was educated at Texas State University, got his master's degree there in animal science, master's degree at West Texas University. Before coming to extension, he served as animal science instructor at Garden City Community College, he also served as a HACCP supervisor out of Tyson, so he has a variety of experiences that he brings to extension and to Potter County. He has received some awards in extension in his short career, he was named the incoming agent of the year in 2013, he's also received the early career agent award from the Texas Association of County Ag Agents, and so he has proved himself to be very qualified and a good educator, good county extension agent. So I'll pause and see if you have any questions for myself, or Austin.
I have a hard time seeing these you can have in high school.
He's got a youthful mother.
Certainly does.
That's good though.
Might not grow a mustache, maybe.
No, I still struggle. I'd lie to you if I told you I'd been carted for radar moving.
Well, I can just speak to the court, and I visited directly with Austin about his interest in Potter County, and why Potter County, and what it is that brought him potentially to the table, and so really good responses. What I really took as a strong takeaway is, part of his pause about the position is that he wanted to coordinate with the judge directly, Judge Alred, make sure that he was aware and about the transition, that it would work, and so I felt like that spoke very highly of him and the county, because we obviously want to be mindful of any agents coming from other counties in that transition, so thank you for that.
I'd like a little room in there, man.
I do, I had the opportunity to visit with Austin, he's a good young man, highly recommend him. He was the first person I've ever interviewed that asked me a question, an interviewer, and it was a great question, and I wish I had the opportunity to fulfill what he asked me. He asked me, if I was in charge of extension, what would I do?
That's a good question.
What would I do? But anyway, that was great, I certainly would love, in by making the motion that we'd approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Welcome to the ball, Austin.
Welcome, Austin.
Thank you very much, and just a couple things on the plan, we intend to have him start here on the 15th of March.
Okay. And Brandon, in terms of the other open position, late or mid-July, you might be expecting.
As my hopes, I've initiated the interview process with 26 applicants for the 4H, a new ag, or 4H position, initiated the interview process, and I'll be in touch with each of you as we narrow that selection process down.
And just to let the court know, I've also been working with Elizabeth, who we know has now transferred to our position, and the prayer review position, and what is that timeline and posting, because it's outside the normal sphere, so we're continuing to watch that posting timeline so that we can get all of our positions filled.
In closing.
Thank you, thank you.
I have clarification on his last name, is it Boyles? Boys.
B-O-Y. Okay, thank you. Right, number eight, contract Childress in Rango County overflow and made housing to approve an amendment to the agreement with the Childress County Sheriff, and to approve the new agreement with Rango County to house Potter County prisoners. I believe that there was a discrepancy in the Childress contract.
The Rango County is essentially $40.
$40, okay. Do I have a corrected?
I do, I have.
Okay, good. Okay. I think what happened last time was that we asked the sheriff to contact Rango County to see if they would be willing, if they'd be willing to contract with us for a lower price than they do everybody else, and they said, "Love to, but no." And so, we're going to contract with them for the 65, we contracted with Childress for 40. In the event that we should have such an overflow, we can take it straight to where we can with that, too much hassle. Correct, Mr. Coffee? Okay. Is there any questions on that?
Kind of wonder why the difference in price, how far I'm on this, and this further away.
Childress is actually cheaper.
What I'm saying, though, being, why the Rango County is not more.
You're rubbing off on us.
Do they not have the space?
I don't know, it may be that they, you know, they're also make more money, or they're just being, you know, it's all figured in with it, and you have the legs proffered in, and it's all, I don't know.
$25 a premium, that's a big difference. It's probably the same rate they're charging the fed.
Right.
They're never in county, I mean, trying to help one another, but it may come at the end, you know, it may come at the end.
Okay, any more questions on this?
We need.
I have a motion.
I have a motion, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Childress County with a correction of 40 per day, and Rango County at 65, per the agreement presented to the court to house Potter County inmates.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand.
What?
Five, zero. John, I'll give these signs when you, you don't leave without them, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, Strategic Planning Committee, Sheriff and District Courts Projects, to consider an act upon the appointment of a citizens committee for the master planning project, that's from the committee. The few members of the committee met with each commissioner one-on-one, several times obviously, and each commissioner voiced an opinion that they would like to see a citizens committee evolve from this, and so originally, we decided two per person, and then I started thinking about that, and I thought that was way too many additional people to add, so we're going to do one per person, so I hope that each of you have someone in mind today.
I would have, I too.
You had your two.
So it didn't say what?
No, sorry, it just was too many people to add on. So, Commissioner Kelly, you?
I'm sorry, but I don't have, I've talked to three people, and I think with what's going on in the news lately, they have a difficult time wanting to accept the position. I'm still looking.
I do, I have somebody, yes. Mr. Art Ornellis, address of 601 South Pittsburgh, phone number 373-5137. He has agreed very well informed of what's happening in the community, questions right out of the gate, so he appears to be very engaged and willing to serve. The one thing that I might ask, Judge, he does work during the day, he's willing to make accommodations. during the day, he's willing to make accommodations if the committee meets during the day. But the first meeting, if we could have it after hours, is I expect that one to be the longest to get the committees all up to speed, just to make sure that he can participate. But after that, he did indicate that during the day, he could make more accommodations.
Okay, we may have to do, the first meeting will probably be during the day, because I want them to take a tour of the buildings when they're full.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll work around with this schedule. Okay, I have picked Craig Davis, who was also resident in Potter County. I had the option of picking any precinct I wanted. And so I picked Craig Davis, who lives in La Paloma. He has his own business, he's a real estate developer and appraiser. And he was on the board with this, loved to be part of it. So he is my choice. And who do you have today?
Joe Mara Wilson.
Ran her office one time.
Yes, he did.
For your position.
See if you're ready, Watson.
Okay, so, and then you don't, do you have somebody to this?
I do. This is the thing, because I wanted to try to have a diversified demographic. I haven't scared any women for all that.
All right.
Right now, so.
Yeah.
My charge was Anthony Harris, Pastor St. John's Baptist Church. And he'll go on many boards and things throughout this committee. Excellent work. So, but I'm ill, torn, we don't have a female.
I want to mine.
Shame on us. They should have a minute.
However, I can.
Okay, it's your duty to find a female.
Don't say that. You'll take the challenge. He will take the challenge.
Okay, okay. So here's the, here's the problem. We need to meet quickly. So when do you think you can meet that challenge?
When you have the meeting.
When you meet the challenge.
Let me say by when is he meeting?
Oh, excellent, okay. Okay, in the meantime, I need all the information that we all need to give to Shannon, if you don't mind, so we can, address, phone numbers, firstborn and everything. So, okay, so that's good. So do we need to vote on that, Dave? Do we need to vote on that?
Will.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody. Number ten, parking lot, AT&amp;T to consider an act upon allowing approximately twenty spaces to be allocated with employees at AT&amp;T, parking in parking lot west of the AT&amp;T building in Potter County. I've had the opportunity to go out and look at that parking lot there staying for church. And there, I want to consider doing, giving them at least half of it, which would be twenty-six spaces total. I talked to the manager over there. She has nine managers that she would like to be able to park there. That would only give the option of just a few more spaces for her employees, which by the way, a lot of them park in our parking lot anyway. So we're gonna, and she wanted me to be in charge of appointing who it was, and I said, "Absolutely not." But you're going to need to have a lottery of some sort. So we're gonna allot, in my opinion, twenty-six spaces. Is that right, Mike? Twenty-six would be half.
That's what they can.
Okay, twenty-six spaces. And it'd be the north half, I don't know if y'all can see this or not, but the north half of the parking lot would be from here over. And then we have this one still. Ten dollars per person, per month. And they will collect the money and bring it to us. The treasurer's smiling right now. Thank you. That's mine. That's what I've come up with. And I think that will help them and maybe keep them out of our parking lot. And maybe we can take the money and restock it. So I make a motion that we consider this.
Let me discuss this a little bit. What are we going to do with those that are not permitted to park in the lot, but still do? You know, we got, we got to give up some seats, but.
The manager said she has our blessing to tow them at their expense anytime they wanted. And I think Dave was not so much for better style when one of y'all.
Yeah, running off to it. We certainly need a better way to police the lot.
Well, the sheriff and I have talked about it extensively. And we will provide them a sticker for their car. And if they are parked in there without a sticker, they will be ticketed.
Yeah, or yeah, or even, yeah, they have to even put a warrant. I think they would invest in that.
Yeah, you start out with warning tickets and say, "In the future, this second time," and you're going to get a parking ticket, which is going to cost you up to, I don't know, thirty dollars or something like that for parking ticket. Something like that. That might get to, you know.
I forgot to mention, we are going to put stickers, the highest stickers in the winter. That will not look like Potter County stickers.
Why don't we have a plan for those that continue to park there without?
Yes. Y'all go to leasing this, that may affect your taxes if it's done. I'll check with the appraisal district. Did anybody know that?
I don't know. I'm not so sure I agree with that. I mean, it's worth, we need to, I'm not disagreeing. I think we need to check on it.
I just know some of the city's property that they lease, it's prorated as to how much.
Yeah, you may be right.
And Dave, I would add that that has been a question for the new parking garage that's slated to be built that is leased out, one fifty to us, so we're both exempt entities. But if it is being leased out to the hotel, that is not an exempt entity.
Yeah, it's complicated.
That is a question that has come up.
Some of the attorney general, it is somewhat complicated. But my gut reaction was no. Now I'm thinking, I don't know, since it's released in entities that aren't counting, it's worth taking, I mean, it's worth thinking about.
Okay, good. Thanks for bringing that up, Sherry. In the meantime, just hold on a minute until we find out for sure if we're gonna. Okay, so if you can get back, we'll just hold it off for two weeks. Dave, do you have enough time, Dave?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's it for two weeks. Number eleven, Potter County Projects. Mike, do you have anything for today? Number twelve, tax increment reassignment sum. Number one, to receive a report on tiers four activity due June second, twenty fifteen.
Yes, I can, I can report that we had a meeting on Tuesday. And the basic reason for the meeting, I'm fumbling a little bit because I forgot to bring all my stuff in. But anyway, we talked about our finances for the year. All taxing entities have paid. All the projects that two-day happen have paid for. We only have two properties that currently are asking for their tax rebate, and that's Suton Totem and the Courtyard by Marriott. Those are going to, and we heard a report from LGC, and you're going to get a report here in a minute. So I'll repeat that. Next meeting, we're going to do, we don't have anything today. Basically, it was what was in the paper, that projects are still unsecured. Proceeding forward.
So how does that, that baiting work in respect to the allocation of those funds to the double and, is that something that we initiate here?
No. Have we saw tiers? Okay. The way tiers works, they set a base level of taxes in two thousand and six, I believe. And then we, commissioners at that time, city and the other taxing districts, which is the college and the water district. So, okay, for thirty-five years, any increase in value of taxes paid was rebated back to the company requesting back-to-back two thousand and six. At this time, there's two, two businesses that have been approved for that. And that's what, that's what this reboots.
And I think to add to that, Commissioner, when I'm hearing part of your questions, so from our dollars, Carrie, keep me in line here, but every year, we get that dollar amount. What is our tiers amount? We get that from the appraisal district, that's added into our budget, and the money just goes out. From a tiers perspective, there's an account that's set up, and it's called the TIF, T-I-F. And that's where all the allocations are coming from. And so it's happening from year to year. As they get approved for these abatements, they're still paying the dollars. They get their tax bill in, they still pay the dollars. And then the TIF fund comes back and loops back and circles back and refunds them, if you will, their portion of that abatement. So I think the commissioner, the church is.
Right. And you have to make that occasionally, and you have to approve.
Sure, yes, yes.
Tiers is approved, that approves us, whether or not you'll get your.
I will try.
And in theory, as the agreement was originally established, those projects were slated to come to Potter County for input before they go to the council, before they go to the tiers approval. That's been hit or miss, so.
Haven't had any, sir, with the years, sir.
Yes.
All right, that's it.
Okay. Number thirteen, insurance, to hear a report from insurance agent Steve Laff to approve the following renewals. Steve, come on up, but I'm gonna just do these one at a time, if that's okay.
That's great.
And to consider an act upon renewal of property insurance with no increase in property insurance rates in the amount of eighty-nine thousand four hundred between nine dollars from Tax Association counties.
Yes, good news.
Good morning.
Good morning. The property rate actually ticked in one tenth of a cent for a hundred dollars of value. Not much, but it is a slight reduction. The premium actually went from eighty-eight thousand thirty-eight dollars to eighty-nine thousand four twenty-nine, because our property values from total, including the equipment from one fifty-six, one hundred fifty-six million, one hundred and sixty-two. We did do a revaluation on mobile equipment, and we were valuing it at book value, depreciated book value, and it really needs to be valued on a replacement cost value based on actual value at the time of loss. So that, that mobile equipment value went from four ninety-four on a book depreciated value to one point three of, of actual cost value. So no changes in deductibles. We're still at a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible across the board, which is, which is fantastic, including wind and hail. So this will be three years. This will be the third renewal after the hailstorm. After all of that. So you know, next year's a new, new story, but so far, so good.
We should take a picture, because next year it will look like this.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the renewal of property insurance with no increase in the property insurance rates from Tax Association and County.
Second.
And a motion second. All in favor, raise your hand. This is fact, zero. We need to consider an act upon the renewal of cyber media liability insurance in the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars from AIG or to utilize the new automatic cyber media liability insurance coverage from TAC.
Now, TAC, this year, upon our April thirtieth renewal, included cyber liability in the April thirtieth renewal, automatically with no additional cost. So we did a comparison. We, there's always another insurance clause on every policy that says if you have two insurance policies in force, the other one's primary, and we're secondary. So we made AIG's primary. So this interim period between April thirtieth and July one, we wouldn't have double coverage and another insurance clause apply. But since TAC added that cyber liability, automatically, we have a decision to make whether we want to keep the AIG cyber liability that takes effect seven one or non-renew it. The AIG, we did a comparison between the AIG's coverage and the TAC's coverage. And, and AIG is a little broader in several areas, but it's also thirteen thousand dollars in premium. So I believe Jason and David, after my comparison, and went over it. Jason looked at it, and he's recommending just go with the TAC and non-renew the AIG's cyber liability, which would be a thirteen thousand dollar savings. We're giving up a few areas, but for the most part, it looks like it's very good coverage. It's a little lower. Those areas that we're giving up, they've been pretty comfortable with that.
Yeah, David and I looked over it, and the thirteen thousand dollars better is one of the projects this coming year.
And I know that TAC hosted a webinar, maybe like a Q and A session around this. You felt comfortable from those takeaways. I think we were fairly new in the market in getting cyber liability two to three years ago. So we were definitely trying to just be ahead of the curve and preventative, especially with all of our new technology purchases. But I personally am leaning on you two that are.
Yeah, I watched that webinar, and it was, it was really high level. So they didn't go into a lot of detail. But from everything that they talked about, it's going to have claims management. So as soon as an incident happens, you can call them, and they have lawyers on staff and everything that can determine if we do need to use it or what action, of course, we're going to take. So they help us take that action to remedy the breach and kind of give us info on how to proceed. So I, you know, the only thing was, we did get some more services with AIG, and that's why I talked to Jason to see if we were utilizing those services. And we are some of them, but he didn't feel it was worth thirteen thousand dollars just for those extra services they were providing.
Right. And talking with my counterparts around the state, most of them are just going with the tax policy.
Makes sense.
I guess the only consideration would be if for some reason we left TAC in the next two or three years, then we'd probably have to shop this again, which, but if we save premiums for the next three years, it may be.
And Steve, just to make sure I have my notes correct, we're staying with AIG through July first of twenty fifteen?
Yes.
Or you mentioned that date?
Yes.
Okay.
To not. Twenty fifteen.
Okay.
Benefit's, benefits, yes.
Okay, so, Jim.
Okay, do I have a motion on?
I move that we utilize the Tax Association of County cyber liability liability insurance.
One second, okay. You have a motion, second. All in favor, raise your hand.
And thank you all for pausing and making sure that we're being good stewards of those dollars taken.
Steve to consider an act upon keeping crime liability insurance with travelers and to make the TAC automatic coverage secondary.
Yes, now, TAC basically did the same thing with crime insurance. They, they added crime effective April thirtieth to, to the property coverage. And so that left us again with, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, tax crime coverage goes into effect with the property insurance effective seven one automatically. We renewed our crime coverage with travelers effective April thirtieth with the rest of our coverage. So again, starting seven one, if we don't do anything, we're going to have double coverage. And we'll have to make one primary and one secondary. Our alternative, well, first let me say this, the travelers policy, the travelers crime policy is much broader than tax, than tax policy. We have greater limits. However, we have a bigger deductible as well, twenty-five thousand dollar deductible versus tax deductible of a thousand dollars. Okay, TAC automatically provides us with a hundred thousand dollar limit at no additional cost. The travelers policy is two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. So we asked, we went back to TAC and said, "Try, try and match the travelers' protection as closely as possible," which they did. They raised the employee debt limit to two hundred and fifty thousand, but we still don't have all the other limits separated. And they increased the deductible to twenty-five thousand. That charge would be one thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. My recommendation is to keep the travelers' policy in, in effect, make it primary, and then we have TAC as excess, which would give us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of coverage with a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible for twenty-six hundred dollars a year. And the reason I'm, I'm suggesting that is if we, if we non-renewed the travelers' policy, we'd save the twenty-six hundred dollars, which, which in the grand scheme of things is not a lot of money. It's not like the cyber liability, thirteen thousand, it's a much smaller amount. We've used this crime policy in the past to its full extent, and that, that was on the Danny Messer claim. And every bit of the higher limits came into play. on the Danny Messer claim, uh, and every bit of the higher limits came into play. And, um, so because of the expense or, or the smaller expense, uh, and the broader coverage and higher limits, I would just, I would recommend keeping the travelers' policy, making it primary, and then just having TAC as excess of a thousand over there.
Steve, the TAC amount, so that mean two premiums, or you're indicating the one that's included with TAC?
I'm saying the one that's included, so it would be just the twenty-six fifty-five. And we've already paid the twenty-six fifty-five, it would be, i-if we cancel that, we get a portion of that back, but that's already been paid for.
Make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we go with Steve's suggestions and keep both policies.
Prime, is he being the primary?
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Number fourteen, authorization to open software purchase negotiation to consider an act upon a request and my recommendation from the local net advisory board and court direct purchasing agent to begin negotiations with Tyler Technologies for the purchase of Odyssey Core Management Software. More, more amazing, did you say that?
I've got the trouble.
Uh, they got, they got the memo, the memo to impress supply. Thank you for letting us bring this back on my time, and I think you know the history of us having two years to live and trying to get paid down the system of the courts, and, and for the in-prade system of the county and it didn't turn out like we wanted. So, we went back with David and started to talk to Tyler Systems again about their Odyssey program, and some of the things we talked about that have been discouraging to us was that, people had said they nickel and dime you to death, you know, you'll get a program, you'll say, oh, I don't have that, why don't I have that? So, we addressed that to our lady that was visiting with us, and we included everything that everybody told us that they had wanted and did not know that they weren't getting, uh, including an appeal package, e-signatures workflow, E5MR, merge to tip, uh, updates on everything, and, um, I think she satisfied our lady that we would be getting everything that, that, uh, and this also played an adjacent addition for their, their initiatives. I also visited, uh, with, uh, someone at the, um, software agency that is doing our integration, and I said, is any other program, uh, in the state totally integrated at this point? That some are close, but they're not, and this is a year and a half into their mandatory uh, E5M. And then also, I don't know if you saw it last week, there was a, a survey came out from one of our officers in the state on who had what software, and not everybody responded, but there were over sixty-five counties that had Tyler Odyssey. So, we feel like this is something that, that will, um, meet our needs. It also includes, well, I'm talking like I know what I'm talking about, but it includes API toolkit, which will allow Jason's department to integrate with, with some things, not everything, depending on if the, the vendor that he's dealing with will line in, into their, into their area, that, that we give that availability, if both parties can do that.
And when do we look in the timeline, when will it be done, by the year?
Uh, possibly, depends on how long it takes to get the contract negotiated, and that's what we're coming here today to say, say, if we can go right and negotiate a contract.
Yeah, this would be, this would be approval of the project if it allowed me to, to start talking to them to go over the contracts, kind of like we did with the other software project, and to bring an actual true cost, and we've got a budgetary cost, but, um, until I have authority from you all as a court, I didn't want to try to start getting prices down, so.
And so David, how does this come into play with the RFP process?
So, the RFP was closed, um, Tyler Technologies is a member of cooperative purchasing, they've, they've bid against other companies on a contract that another government entity put out that we're allowed to piggyback off and use those same prices, so it, it's a cooperative bid that has been bid out that we'd be purchasing off that contract, so, um, we've already seen numbers from the competitors because of RFP, so I can kind of do some comparison to what they're trying to charge us versus what we've already put out, so it wouldn't be an official RFP that was released and, and everything, it would actually be bought off of, um, that corporate contract, which is legal for us to do, so.
Uh, but based on our previous history with our last technology purchase and the RFP process, do you feel like it should follow a similar process, that we open it up for bids and then get it down to the one to two competitive vendors, or?
I, I think because the, the clerks especially have seen all the competitors, I, I almost think that would be a waste of time, honestly. Um, I, I think it would be a, a two-month process that would get us to the same position we are right now, uh, because, you know, RFP, we're assigning criteria other than price and actual functionality, and I think the last three years, we've seen so much that we know that this is probably the software suite that's gonna lead to functionality. Um, so I, I really do not think it would, it would, I, I don't think it would be a problem, I guess.
Okay, um, and then the question I have is the last update we all received as a court, you know, we were in a transition that you were gonna hire someone to build the software, and then kind of out of nowhere, no, we're not doing that, we're changing courses, and so this is the last formal update, at least that I have heard, that we're now moving to a vendor, so what is that strategy like? Um, I thought we were landing on using some of our internal highly skilled, um, paid staff, and how, how will that transition work?
I think that was a, a good idea, I think Jason will even say now that he really doesn't have the staff to be able to, to have designed it, although they are highly technical, uh, trained, I know in the prosecutor's program, they're really getting high rates from them, uh, it's being used to install quicker than they expected, and, uh, and even when we visited with the Tyler people, they said our system is more sophisticated than many they've seen, so we do have a great program, I just think that in looking at, um, all the other, all these programs that have put in thousands of hours and millions of dollars, that we really need to go with the tried and treated.
So, it's almost like we, we have the technology and the, and the expertise in our own house, but we just don't have enough of the, the manpower, manpower resources available.
And he's still gonna have, I mean, he's still gonna have to be on board, you know, with that, so, I mean, he, we've asked him, he is on, on board with us, it is gonna take some of the people to help us with that, it's too tough for us to install, uh, because the data is gonna be sitting on their, our servers, and so, and we have talked to them.
Jason, would you like to add anything to those comments, agree, disagree?
No, and I, I agree, and I think it's time to start the negotiation process, try and get the ball, but.
How does it relate to the API and us now having access to the source code that we're using for the software package with DA's office? Well, we, this whole project started around, all of these projects started on, let's talk better to each other, and we have a system that we know is an old system, but it somewhat talks to a lot of departments, and so it feels like we're moving on the complete opposite end of that spectrum. How are we managing to that?
Well, the idea is, once everything's in place, which, I mean, we're talking a year, two years out, uh, is that anything that's typed in once, it won't have to be typed in again, that's, that's still the goal, and, uh, we can do that a hundred percent with the other packages we've got, and as much as Tyler will let us, we'll use it second with Tyler.
And so is that gonna be included in part of the negotiation, that they let us into their system to start to integrate?
That, that can be asked, but I, 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 well, I can't speak for them, but even the, the CUC could not give that up with their, their power, so I don't, I don't see our power being big enough to, to get that concession. Uh, the AIP, API toolkit, that's designed to allow the system to talk, and that is included for Jason to use as much as he wants, but I don't think they'll have direct access into the source code, though. Just, just looking at across the state and everyone else, that, that has never been given up, I guess, and to, to pay for that, I don't, I don't think we have enough money to make it.
What is our budget for this, um, line I got carried, or are there eighty dollars left, or they're all used with the JP package that was included as well?
They are all used.
We do have allocated, some allocated money in the cap projects.
And then, but that affects the other projects, buildings and things that we're talking about, from a strategic planning perspective as well?
That does not include the courts building and the sheriff's administration, those times were set, these are totally done.
Okay, and none of those had been reviewed for the fire station three project? Okay, okay.
So, again, remember, we've been talking about figures.
We, we looked into both the onsite, on-premise figures, do you have that? I mean, I've got it, but you don't.
I don't have it.
Okay, so we can't put it on their screen. Um, the Hark, the Hark Bass figure, you're like one point two, I believe, and that's why David wants to, I mean, that's, that's not with his negotiations either.
The hard part is that we moved forward with the JP package that was not mandated, and those dollars, I mean, I feel like it's put you in a difficult spot because, and, and I, and I said that, you know, during that discussion and debate, but those JP dollars have taken over for that software, and then, and then bring you guys down, nothing left?
I, I put on, Mr. Kelly's, I scribbled it on there, that I'd be willing to give up, uh, put in a hundred thousand dollars for my record management for it. Also, uh, what did I put for twenty, oh, there's a twenty. Yeah, there's a two dollar technology fee that we have, uh, earned every time we have an E5 in so far, and we have almost twenty-five thousand in net in a year and a half.
And also, core technology, that's one hundred and five thousand dollars too.
And then also, we won't be using the image, which I think will end up to be about a thousand dollars, so with the different, um, departments, if the main, uh, fee is five thousand, then there are fifteen departments that pay three seventy-five hundred, so we won't be using that, so.
Well, at this point in time, we're just asking for the probability for David to go out and contract negotiations, and so then we can bring back the, the dollars and cents to him.
I'll make a motion, uh, Mr. Hark, go out and look, check on these bids and see what this thing's really gonna cost.
Second.
Your motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed?
Caroline, I want to ask you a question, uh, do you have your personal talk with the county magazine?
That's circles?
Yeah. You haven't seen that she's on the front covers, she's on the inside, she's in the hole, well, no, not.
That was our legislative team with, uh, Representative Clardy, he sponsored our main clerk's bill, and we were in love, man.
Yeah.
We, we got to know very well because our bill was on purpose in one fifteen in the morning.
Glad it didn't say wine glasses.
Absolutely, thanks.
Timber, so, in the hospital room.
Okay, number fifteen, surplus property to consider an act upon disposing of the attached list of items that did not sell in auction.
Uh, you have a list in front of you of free lots that didn't sell in this last surplus auction, so I'm asking permission to dispose of that, I will post it on the list there for the, for the community groups to come get it, and if, if not, we may try to resell the printers, um, in the next one, but the other ones, uh, try to find someone to come pick them up so we don't have to throw them away.
Okay, so you want to go with it?
Yeah, absolutely.
How bad are the wooden coffee tables, really, awful?
You can come look at them. I wouldn't put them in my house, but they might have some reasonable price. And just, and, and this is something I've never done, and I probably will start doing, we did, we did generate twenty-eight thousand dollars off of the science auction, but it will be coming up to the general.
Hey, do I have a motion on that, please?
I, I make motion to act upon the disposal of the attachments to items that did not sell in auction with, uh, Ironman, that you will present that to the community.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Your motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number sixteen, equipment purchased to consider an act upon purchasing an oven to replace Quater County number one, seven, six, one, two, from Golden Light Equipment Company, in the amount of six thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Funds to be transferred from the detention center building repair and maintenance account due to equipment account.
Uh, this is to replace an oven that is, that is at the end of its life, uh, the detention center, rather than budget for it and wait, they want to go ahead and do it and take it out of some other funds they have, um, so they don't have an impact on the budget, uh, but it's, we bought the other one back in two thousand and six, so it is nine years old, good one, every day, it's at that, that's why.
And Carrie, the account that the dollars are moving from, um, you feel comfortable there's enough in there, still lasts the rest of the fiscal year?
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we allow the purchase of an oven to replace piece number seventeen, six, twelve, from Golden Light Equipment Company, in the amount of sixty-one eighty-five eighty-six cents.
Second.
Your motion, and second, all in favor, raise your hand. That's as far as you go. We have no executive session, employment item is from elections, a salary increase per K. Callaway, effective January, I mean, January, July first, twenty fifteen. Question for that?
I move we approve the salary increase of one dollar per hour for K. Callaway.
And second, for quick discussion, Carrie, just making sure everything is budgeted, I mean, I'm reading her notes here, but I just wanted to confirm that, yes, okay, thank you, second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Jail report, we have four hundred and fifty-eight in the jail, one hundred and five of those are female, and another one on shoulders.
Can I go back briefly to the parking lot issue?
Sure.
Or, or, we did a quick check, like the treasury district, fire calculation, Carrie's the man person on me, it looks like taxes in, if we aren't, it's in for about six hundred dollars a year, that parking lot, not so sure it's worth worrying about, but I, well, I, if you want to wait, we'll double check on that, but.
Okay, okay.
Well, you see, in either way.
Frankly, I believe if that figure's wrong, I'm not so sure, can't handle the tax. Carrie, what do you, what do you think?
I just know the city has laid property.
Oh, no, I, I'm not, it may well be taxable, I, I think that, I'm more, I think that.
It's only on the car that's leased.
Yeah, so it's, but even if we did have to pay, even if there is property tax, it's gonna be minimal, it's gonna be probably, I can't imagine it being worth fifteen hundred dollars in worst case scenario.
But do you think we're making, if, if we move forward, we would be making enough on those property spots to offset?
A little over three thousand if we do, uh, twenty-six spots, ten dollars.
But that's assuming they're off field, that's, and so if, I mean, I'm just, I'm not saying they're not gonna be filled, I'm just saying are they gonna be paid in field, because then that puts the dollar, the burden of the dollar on us.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that.
But if you want to go back, you know, we just thought you wanted to go ahead and get.
Let's go ahead and do it, and we can do it now and move these people off my back.
I will still, I will still report on you later, whether it's in, I just said, uh, on story, we can see you have.
Are we comfortable with that, Carrie, you comfortable, Carrie, you comfortable with that, as far as, uh?
If it's possible, that's, that is gonna be responsible for the rental amount, do you think they would be willing to do that, Judge?
I'm sorry, did you want?
Would HMT be responsible for, for rental amount, even if they didn't have a point in that?
Should we draft a contract?
They're gonna have plenty, and it's gonna be four.
So, we, we can. That's a good, that's a good point, yeah, I think the contract.
I think, I think that would be efficient, so when they. Just a one-page little contract, saying, you promise what you give us, and we promise we'll do that.
Okay, well, then I'll say, we'll, we'll, I'm gonna put in your provision, tell that your property taxes on that.
So, we need to hold up on that, uh, motion until we get a permit?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's see for two.
Okay, I wanna just take, just a second and read, we have a thank you card here from Pelter High School for the Government Day, and just a couple of comments they made, it was very amazing experience to see a side of Amarillo that I've never seen before, such an inspiration, I don't know who that was from, but I can't remember the name, um...
Um, another one is I'm thankful for the opportunity to have one-on-one conversation with the community. Uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to see what government is about. So it's just, they're all little comments that people made and we thank them for coming and we'll do this again every year. So that gets good, thank you for sharing that. I think, wait on him.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, and, uh... Sebastian may want to jump in here too. I just wanted to make you all aware of some of the calls I've been getting since the rainstorms. It may be a surprise to us, but, uh, bush can splat. And, um, water doesn't run very well on a flat surface. So we have, uh, I, we've received a lot of calls that the water is not draining away the streets and the holes and things like that. So I just want you to be aware of this problem we have out there. In the future, when someone comes with a plat for proof, we need to really be careful. It's stressed, the need for good drainage. And I think they're, they could design it to go to a drainage pond or something to get it away. But, uh, the other thing, it's an old plya leg again. When I mention that to people, they ask what a plya leg is. But anyway, uh, just, just for your information, that, that's kind of going on. I've been getting quite a few calls, a few chewing outs and things like that. I think we're surviving.
It's primarily the developer's problem, though, correct, or is it?
Well, they should know so that the water will run somewhere. But in this one particular place, the builder took a bunch of, bunch of soil from the front end of the, the house to build the house up. And he's got himself a pond in front of his house, which, that's now our problem, I guess, according to...
Is it a pond or is it a mound?
So that's been pretty challenging, huh, Sebastian?
Yes, it has, for years.
So they're calling you to come out and can you help when you can, is that correct?
Well, yes, uh, Bill Thomas, y'all remember Bill Thomas anyway. He shot grades out there. There's county bridge to I forty and it's probably, I don't know, a couple of tens of miles. But there's only like an inch drop from there to where it's supposed to drain. I mean, you gotta, it's just flat, it's hard to get it to drain. You'd have to dig those ditches so deep, it's starting one end and working way the other. And it's pretty much impossible. But, uh, during that rain, I went out there, me, Donny Ravis and all, and we, we took turns going out there constantly. And as much rain as we got, it drained very well. So I was pleased with that because I thought it was going to be, they were going to be swimming from their houses as much rain as we got. Because we haven't got that much rain in, in all that long. So yeah, I think it's draining well. I mean, it's not draining, you know, it's flat, but there's some spots that we're going to work on. As soon as it dries out enough, if it ever does, if it don't rain again, we're going to try to clean those ditches again and try to get them to where, at least if it, if it sets in the ditch, it's going to set away from the houses with mosquitoes. And the people don't have to look at it as much, because they can complain about water in the ditches, but I mean, it's going to sit there because it's flat. We do what we can and we just have to, uh, take it from them as much as possible. But I mean, I think they drained very well, especially on the other, the old side. If we cut all that, if you remember correctly, we cut all that from the back of the fire station, all the way out to Butch's place. And it drained real well, so, I mean, it's doing what it's doing and that's all. I mean, it flooded the whole thing to death. So it's, we're lucky.
So in the future, maybe someone brings a plat, who's, who's responsible for making sure that it's, uh?
Well, I mean, the word, it's, we approve it. But we, I mean, like I said, there's only so much drainage. We looked at it, we, we look at it from, as soon as they start breaking ground, the ditches to the collegiate, to the subgrade, everything. We approve step by step. So when it gets all approved, it, it is our responsibility and we look at it. But I mean, that's all you can do is get it to drain like it is, that's all you can do, it's so flat. But we did approve it. The homeowners out there also, uh, Floyd Hudson, he's a developer. And he tells those people to call us, get their culverts before they put them in. He put it in the, in their, uh, contracts when they build a house, to call us about their culverts. So we can go out there and tell them what size, if we're going to do it, they're going to do it and we'll cut the ditches so we're drained. Well, we have a bunch of issues with them out there just throwing the culvert in the ground and covering it with dirt. And there's a pile over the top where it's not the right size. Or they put cement all the way, they got the sprinklers all the way up to the edge of the road, or they got gravel. This four-inch gravel from their front door all the way out to the edge of the, the road. I mean, there's so many different nations. It's hard to control. But if we ever have to have an issue, we can dig right out.
That's our right.
That's the reason they did, that's the only rule.
Yeah, but they want the city rule, I mean, they want the city benefits of drainage, but they want them to...
Okay, so do we have any additional agenda items?
Judge, if I can just add the L G C for next time?
Okay.
Because, um, we have a meeting this Wednesday, so I'm sure I have it.
And also the Walnut Hills Bridge, part of the agenda.
And the fire station three, ninety-five percent designable D C. We want to hold that at the end of the court next time. I think we'll see a presentation.
And I think, well, really, we have somebody in the audience would like to speak to the Walnut Hills Bridge issue. Collins Park, come on up. Come on up to the mic. We'll give you a couple of minutes.
I won't make that many.
Okay.
There are two areas of concern for the Walnut Hills residents. One of them is the Dewey Avenue Bridge, which you referred to as the Walnut Hills Bridge. And the, uh, second item is an alternate or a secondary access to Walnut Hills. And if those could be on the next meeting agenda, I would appreciate it. Okay?
Thank you.
And the next meeting is?
Two weeks.
Two weeks from today.
So it's the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Thank you. I'll let everybody in Walnut Hills out.
Okay, thank you, that's all we got, John.
I, Joe, I have the, I have an insurance item that...
Oh, that's right.
It got left off.
Sorry, yeah.
Um, the Argo that the sheriff bought, the four-by-four off-road, it, it flipped when they were doing a rescue out of the river. And so our insurance company did consider a total loss. Uh, but they're giving us full value minus our thousand dollar deductible. And the sheriff's office is actually wanting to buy the old unit back at a salvage value of eight hundred and fifty dollars, which is cheap for the parts that are on there. And so I will have an agenda item next time to, uh, consider up purchasing another one. Um, and they said they would use the, the difference of funds from their corporate account, so that shouldn't have any impact on those companies.
Holland was injured and then?
Not, not from, not from our side.
We are adjourned now, thank you very much.